Good evening, the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting Wednesday, May 8, 2019 is called to order. Will you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Secretary, will you please call the roll?
Commissioner Ellison is here, Commissioner Kish is here, Commissioner Maloney is here, Commissioner Steiner is here, Commissioner Clymer is here, Chairman Bray is here, Vice Chairman Barnes is absent, we have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Secretary, can I get a motion to excuse Commissioner Barnes from this evening's meeting?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we just excuse Chairman Barnes.
Second. It has been moved by Commissioner Kish, seconded by Commissioner Steiner to excuse Commissioner Barnes from this evening's meetings, is there any discussion?
No.
Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, motion carries. I'm gonna take a little bit of prerogative on the agenda and welcome our new Commissioner, Commissioner Ellison, and if you would take just a quick minute to introduce yourself, please.
Okay. Good evening, everybody, my name is Brian Ellison, I'm resident in Goodyear in Palm Valley Phase 5, brand new, so, looking forward to being a part and learning.
Welcome. Thank you and welcome. Agenda item number four is the, you've been provided the draft minutes for the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting held on April 10, 2019. After reviewing those, I'll take a motion on that.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the minutes from the April 10 meeting.
Second.
It has been moved by Commissioner Steiner, seconded by Commissioner Kish to approve the minutes from April 10, 2019, is there any discussion? Discussion seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, motion carries. Agenda item number five, this is the public comments. Now is the time for citizens who would like to address the Planning and Zoning Commission on any non-agenda items. Are there any speakers' cards? Is there anyone from the audience that would like to address us on any non-agenda items? Perfect. Agenda item number six, this is disclosure of ex parte communications. This is opportunity for Commission members to disclose any ex parte communication they may have had prior to this meeting. Commissioners, any disclosures?
No.
Thank you. Agenda item number seven is old business and we have none, we'll move right into new business. I will open the public hearing on the rezon of approximately 45.51 acres to the Drosia Ranch planned area development PAD planning. Our presentation is supposed to be by Katie, but at this point in time, our staff is asking to continue this to the June 12, 2019 meeting, and we will do so unless there is anybody from the public that has specifically come for this agenda item. No one? Okay. With that, I'll take a motion to continue this agenda item 8.1 to the June 12 meeting, please.
I saw a move.
Second.
It has been moved by Commissioner Clymer, seconded by Commissioner Kish to continue this item to the P&amp;Z meeting to be held on June 12, 2019 at 6:00 PM. Is there any discussion?
No.
Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay, motion carries. Agenda item 8.2, I'll open the hearing on the rezon of the city-owned lands at and around 157th Avenue Water Reclamation Facility, and our long-range planner, Joe Schmidt, will present, welcome, Joe.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commission members. As you noted, this is the proposed rezoning of 155 acres of city-owned property, which is basically located around the existing water reclamation facility at the 157th Avenue plant. This property is west, just west of Australia Parkway, north of the BID irrigation canal, south of MC-85, and just east of Cervel Avenue. The property currently houses, in addition to the water reclamation facility, Public Works Administration Building and lay-down yards, the fleet vehicle maintenance building, and a dog park, and the BMX racetrack. The purpose of the rezoning is basically to rezone the property, which is about the west 40 acres, westerly of the water reclamation facility for a new surface water treatment facility. In the process of reviewing this, we identified a couple of parcels that may or may not have had quite the correct zoning. We found this parcel down at the very south end, apparently never was rezoned to the Public Facilities District, so we recommended that the entire property be aggregated and rezoned to the Public Facilities District with a PAD overlay, which modified some of the development standards of the PAD district, PFD district, and allowed a couple additional uses. This is another aerial photograph. In all, I think there's eight separate parcels, and the plan is to aggregate them all into a single parcel. The boundary along this area is set by what we expect will be the right-of-way acquisition for the State Route 30 alignment, which has been established by ADOT through the environmental process, so we know pretty much where that's intended to go. I know this is difficult to read, but, and I'm going to go to a different slide, but these red lines represent the phasing. This will be Phase 1 of the water treatment plant project, and then there'll subsequently be a Phase 2 and a Phase 3. Zeroing in a little bit more, these are the process units that will be constructed on the site. There'll be filtration units and chlorination units and everything you need to have a functioning water treatment plant. This is a new approach for the cities up till currently. We have relied entirely on groundwater, and this project, along with, I believe it's a six-mile line pipeline that extends back to the east to the intersection of Lower Buckeye and Avondale Boulevard, where there's a takeoff point for the SRP canal. So we will take delivery of the CAP water at that point, bring it to this plant, treat it, and then put it into the distribution system. This is a rendering that shows you what the site will approximate, looking from the north to the south. There'll be an administration and operations building for the plant itself, and then you have the ozone building, the clarification units, the chemical facility, the filtration facility, clear well, electrical building, maintenance building, and then residuals handling facility at that point. This is a rendering of what the operations building will look like. It'll be a combination of block and stone, and have a metal roof. And I have representations of the balance of the buildings on the site, but those are included in your agenda packet, so I won't bother to go through those unless there's a specific question. In the staff report, we noted that the proposed rezoning is consistent with the general plan, and we had gotten no comment from Luke Air Force Base, but however, we've gotten some comment from the Phoenix Goodyear Airport through the Aviation Division of the, of Phoenix, and they have raised some concerns. What I'd like to do is just mention briefly what those concerns were. They had recommended that we consider three additional stipulations. One is that to require the development to conform to an FAA advisory circular regarding hazardous wildlife attractants on or near airports. Second stipulation regarding that any development shall secure no hazard determination from the FAA through the 7460 obstruction evaluation process. And the third, which would require any development, or development on this property would be subject to an avocation easement that the City of Phoenix is asking the City of Goodyear to provide. We have responded to that request for the stipulations by advising that we have most, if not all, of those points addressed to some extent in the PAD overlay and in the stipulation in the draft ordinance for this rezoning. So we have respectfully declined, including those additional stipulations at this point. And we are recommending that we go forward with the staff recommendation, which is to approve conditionally rezoning of 155 acres owned by the city to the PFD zoning district with a final plan area development overlay as set forth in the draft of ordinance 2019-1433, which is included in your agenda support material. That concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. The applicant, which is the Public Works Department, is represented here tonight. If you have any questions of the applicant.
Thank you, Joe. Is there any questions for Joe at this time?
No.
Nope. Does anybody wish to speak to the Public Works Department? Nope, you're off the hook, it's easy. We should always drill the city.
Just one question, exactly what is going to happen at the water treatment plant?
So, I'll allow him to answer that question because you're here. But typically, we don't take questions from the four, just to let you know, but I will...
Mr. Chairman, if I may, when you're done with this, maybe call the public and the gentleman can come give his name.
Absolutely.
Go forth, please, and then address it to you, and then you can dole it out to staff.
Perfect.
Actually, I'm gonna ask either Barbara Chapel or Teresa Smith DeJesus to answer more specifically. I have familiarity with water treatment plants, but I'm gonna let them talk about theirs.
Okay. Sir, do you have other comments or questions regarding this project?
No, just what exactly is going to happen.
Okay, so would you just come to the mic and name and address? No, we don't do address anymore, just the name, and ask the question, so it's on the record, please? And then we'll have our staff answer your question.
My name is Tom Swan. What I would like to ask is, at the facility, exactly what is going to come out of the facility? Is it straight water, is it sewage, et cetera?
Absolutely.
Good evening, Chair, Councilor, Commissioners. Barbara Chapel, and if you don't mind, I'm gonna pull up one of the other slides, it'll help me kinda describe the whole campus and then what we plan on our facility, okay? So, currently, we have existing facilities. You enter here, as Joe explained, there's a fleet facility. We have our administration building, and this area here is a water reclamation facility or a wastewater plant. So sewage from our customers between pretty much I-10 and the Gila River is what this plant serves. All the water is delivered through the sewer collection system to this facility, and it's treated to A-plus quality. That water is then recharged for storage in the aquifer and indirect potable reuse. We'll pull it out, back out of the ground with our wells, and it just completes the water cycle. The facility back here that we're getting ready to construct, this is a site plan, and probably better to show these buildings. This will take surface water from the Salt River Project Delivery System. It's our Central Arizona Project water legally, but it's delivered through SRP's system to a location in Avondale, where we have a raw water pump station and a pipeline that's gonna convey that water approximately six miles to this facility. The water will come in at the north end and start its treatment process. This is sand ballasted clarification, so that's where we settle out some solids. We have some ozone here, helps with taste and odor. Filtration process, clear well, where we're gonna disinfect and store the water before we distribute it to our customers. This is where all of our chemicals will be stored to help feed these processes. And then what happens is there's those solids that we removed through all of these processes create what we call residuals. It's mostly organic in nature, it's what came from either Roosevelt, you know, through the Salt River system. It's in all the surface waters in the state, and we'll be removing that and just completely de-watering it. And we're gonna utilize the wastewater plant's solids handling facilities, so we're kinda joint-using those facilities to get all the water out, and then all of those solids, bio-solids from the reclamation facility and the residuals from this facility will be hauled to a landfill for disposal. So, I guess to answer the question at hand is, we will be taking surface water into the facility, creating potable drinking water that will go to our residents, and the solids will be hauled off to a landfill.
And I think one of the things that we should be proud of as citizens of Goodyear is that we have been paying for CAP water and have not actually had delivery, just because we didn't have the infrastructure. And so this is a huge deal for the city and for the residents, that we're now getting the benefit of what we've been paying for.
Yes, that is true, however, we have been benefiting from the Central Arizona Project water. We've just been using it indirectly. We recharge it in the ground outside of our city and then withdraw it. So legally, we've been using it, but you're absolutely correct. This project will allow us to get the full use out of that water resource.
Thank you. Any other questions for...
I did have a question for staff. What is the, on the aerial photo, what is the property just, I think it's north of the property?
This is the future State Route 30.
Okay, and then just above that, yeah, right here.
And then just, so the city owns this, and then, Joe, this is agriculture, but you wanna talk about what the future, he knows better what.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioner Kish, the property in this area is owned by S&amp;P, and it is owned under a, it's industrial zoning under a PAD overlay in the Australia Commerce, called Australia Commerce Park. This property was part of, what was that, one-time Riverside Park? It was a preliminary PAD that never got to full fruition, and the eastern half of that PAD was designated as business park, so which was kind of a light industrial. And the city actually bought this property from that landowner.
So it wouldn't be putting any residential around this area?
At this time, there's no residential planned anywhere near this.
Excellent, that was my question, thank you for answering. Any other questions for staff, or of any staff, our staff, city staff? Nope. Any other comments from the public, any speakers' cards? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, and I'll take a motion on Agenda Item 8.2, the Public Facilities District.
Mr. Chairman, I propose that we move to approve case number 19-200-00006.
Second. It has been moved by Commissioner Maloney, seconded by Commissioner Steiner to approve the rezon of the city-owned lands at and around 157th Avenue for the water reclamation facility to the Public Facilities District. Is there any discussion?
No.
Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Agenda item 8.3, this is the preliminary plat for Camelback Center at PB-303, and Steve, but not Steve, Katie.
Thank you, Chairman, and members of the Commission. So this Camelback Center is located at the southeast corner of Camelback and Pebble Creek Parkway, which you can see on this map. It is part of the PB-303 PAD zoning area, which was first zoned in 2007, and the last amendment to that zoning was in 2018. The zoning is I-1 light industrial with a PAD overlay. The preliminary plat proposes subdividing 135 acres into two lots, which would facilitate light industrial development. There's the two lots. And that concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Katie? No. Do we have an applicant here? Yes, would you like to address the Commission? Any questions for the applicant? None? Okay. Are there, is anyone here from the public that would like to discuss this issue? Speakers' cards? None? All right. With that, I'll take a motion on Agenda Item 8.3.
I saw a move that we approve 18-500-0020.
Second.
It has been moved by Commissioner Clymer, seconded by Commissioner Kish to approve the preliminary plat for Camelback Center at PB-303. Is there any discussion?
No.
Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay, motion carries. Thank you. Agenda item 8.3, this is a preliminary plat for Australia Parcels 9.22 and 9.24A and B, and Alex will present this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, good evening Commissioners. The preliminary plat before you tonight is approximately 53 acres, located in the Montecito portion of the Australia community. In 2018, the Montecito PAD was updated and designated this parcel as single-family detached 50, or SFD 50. Please note that this area is included as one preliminary plat, which we'll just refer to as 9.22, but the PAD designated the property split up into three sections, 9.22, 9.24A, and 9.24B. Most recently, in September of 2018, the Commission recommended approval of the preliminary plat for parcel 9.31, which is just north of the property. The parcel consists of 111 single-family detached lots and 17 tracts. The lot sizes in the parcel are planned for 65 feet wide and 125 feet deep. The development standards will be regulated by the Montecito PAD. Portion of the property is adjacent, or the property is adjacent to the Rainbow Valley Water Reclamation Facility. There is a requirement that without noise and odor controls, residential development is only allowed outside of a thousand-foot setback, so that's gonna be this first line here. And if noise and odor controls are implemented, then residential development can take place at a 350-foot setback, the second line. So this, this area in the white is the future buildout of the water treatment facility. As you can see on this exhibit, the facility is currently only operating about four and a half acres, which is the area in purple, and then future buildout is that yellow area. As shown on this exhibit, the thousand-foot setback without noise and odor controls, which is this line here, exceeds the thousand-foot requirement proposed for preliminary plat for tonight. Staff has worked with the applicant to stipulate the preliminary plat for two items specifically. One, a stipulation to require the noise and odor controls to be installed by the applicant at the time the facility is expanded. And then the second is that the applicant shall install signage at the edge of the future facility buildout to serve as notification to future property owners of future buildout. After we did finalize the agenda, staff and the applicant determined that stipulation number two regarding the noise and odor controls was not clear and currently implies that zoning action is required. Staff has determined that at this time, it's not required to move forward with the preliminary plat, therefore would like to rewrite this stipulation, keeping the intent, but updating the language for clarity. I don't have that, what that language looks like currently, but we do ask that you move forward in recommending approval with staff's ability to update the language a little bit. Otherwise, it meets all requirements of the city's regulations as well as the standards required by the Montecito PAD, and staff recommends approval subject to stipulations, and as I mentioned, the stipulation that we'd like to clarify. This concludes my presentation, and I can answer any questions. The applicant is also here, thanks.
And that's stipulation number two?
Number two, yes.
Any questions for Alex at this time?
No.
What kind of language, maybe that's where I'm getting hung up on, is the language changes, or what is different that was, needs to be changed?
Thank you. The, after reading through it, it sounded a little bit redundant. It sounded, the end of the stipulation states that zoning, unless zoning action, or a zoning amendment takes place to the ordinance that requires the separation. So we, after, we determine internally that the ordinance does not need to be updated, that because of the use, the buildout will automatically require that the odor controls be implemented.
Okay.
Without that language update.
I think enough, so...
Chairman, if I may jump into, just to clarify, it's also gonna provide some ease for staff, because right now it says, "Go see the stipulation in this ordinance," where we can pull that language into this ordinance, so staff doesn't have to go reference these other ordinances. What that stipulation says is that the odor control will be done with the Phase 2 improvements. So basically, the stip will be revised. We just don't have the exact language that the odor control will be done with the Phase 2 improvements, which is what that ordinance says, rather than saying "The odor control will be done in conformance with ordinance 17-whatever it is."
Which makes it more efficient.
If that makes sense, so it's clarifying. As it reads right now, it makes it sound like it does need to be done with the subdivision. It doesn't need to be done with the subdivision, it needs to be done with the expansion of the water reclamation facility.
So, that being said, and I know you guys are usually like totally on top of your game, and I completely trust you, that it'll be handled, but is there a way that we can word the motion that says, as long as, you know, we give you that rein, as long as it keeps within the spirit of the stipulation or something of that nature, to kinda just make sure we put some sideboards on there for everybody, that all of a sudden, you guys, you know, somebody got ahold of it, and we're way off the mark?
Yes, I think that if you, stop me if I am incorrectly speaking, but motion to approve with keeping the intent of stipulation number two as adjusted by staff.
Okay. Does that work? Okay, perfect. Any other questions for Alex?
And just in terms of water reclamation or water treatment, it sounds like water treatment tonight quite a bit. Is there, what is the standard, because there's another reclamation facility in Goodyear, I think it's next to a residential area by Best Buy. Wasn't there something down in the middle, off of McDowell at one point? And I remember that being an issue at one point. It's not now, for some, but what changed? And then I'm concerned that this will be an issue for the residents of Montecito in the future, if there is some weird downwind, or something was an issue back then. So, Mr. Chairman, thank you if I may. There is particular state law that requires these buffers, and so that's why there's this 1,350. The treatment facility you're referring to in McDowell is actually owned and operated by Liberty Utilities. And so their new construction, relatively new, completed probably, what, eight months to a year ago of improvements at that facility has essentially helped to eliminate that problem. The noise and odor control requirements...
The, the noise and odor control requirements that would be placed on this as a result of additional development in the area is the responsibility of the developer to, to help fund, but it is ultimately a city-maintained project. And so it will have the, the technology associated with both noise control and odor control. So there should not be an issue at that time. It would obviously have to be engineered and designed. And we're nowhere near meeting the trigger, the threshold for the expansion of that plant at this point in time.
Is there any way of knowing when that trigger would happen? Or is it an amount of people that have to service that area?
Yes. So it's, it's, the trigger is essentially the flows that are going to that area, which is a result of Mr. Teiki and his group's development activity.
Okay. Thank you.
Unfortunately, we lost our water treatment news.
Any, any other questions for staff?
Mr. Chairman, maybe Pete might want to, if I may.
Absolutely, he's up next.
Yes.
So Pete, would you like to kick it off with answering that question and any other comments?
Good evening, Commissioner and Commission members. Yeah, the requirement is that the plant's a 750,000 gallon per day plant. When we close in on 80% of the 750,000 capacity, you have to start design. At 90%, you have to start construction. Right now, we're running at about 400,000 gallons.
Oh.
Per day.
Okay. Quite a ways from that. Okay.
Otherwise, if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them. Other?
Any other questions for Mr. Teiki?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
If there are no other question, or is there any comments from the public on this issue? Saying none, I will take a motion for Agenda Item 8.3.
Chairman, I move that we approve item number 8.3. Which is 18-500-00020.
No.
It's 8.4.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, I apologize. It's 8.4.
I'm sorry, I have.
8.4. That's my bad. Which I amend that last statement is 8.4, which is 18-500-00015.
Second.
Second.
It has been moved by Commissioner Kish, seconded by Commissioner Steiner to approve the preliminary plat for Estrella Parcel 9.22. And if we can ask that I, you add the friendly amendment to it about keeping the spirit or the intent of stipulation number two, but allowing staff drafting authority.
That.
After that?
Whatever Chairman, I would say.
Like, done.
So the, the motion on the table is by Commissioner Kish to approve the preliminary plat for Estrella Parcel 9.2, while allowing staff to, the drafting authority to change stipulation number two while keeping its intent. Seconded by Commissioner Steiner, is there any discussion?
No.
Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay.
Nay.
Motion carries. Was that, did you want to note that?
No.
Or you just got excited?
No, 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 no.
Okay. Thank you. Agenda Item number nine, staff communication.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As we typically do, just to update you on the outcome of some of the cases or the case that you considered at the April meeting and the council's vote. That case was the, to amend the PAD for the Christopher Todd Community at Canyon Trails for the height from 16 feet to 20, if you recall that. That one was approved by the council on April 22nd. Additionally, you'll be receiving an email from our office with an agenda for training. If you remember, and maybe the, the existing commissioners, well, I guess you're all existing. I don't mean it like that. Maybe the more longer tenured commissioners have heard us talk about some training opportunities that we've been exploring and trying to pull together to address some of the needs of the commission that have been expressed to us. And so we, we have a draft agenda, and I'm going to email that out to you. And I would encourage you to please take a couple of moments to look at it and make sure that that draft agenda is covering the topics that you, from your individual commissioner perspective, feel that it should. And if you have any other additional comments or suggestions, please let us know, and we'll work to try and incorporate that in. Our initial thought was to try and have this training in, in June, but it does not look, or does not appear that that's going to be likely to be able to happen in June. But I am going to send you that draft email or the draft agenda be later this week, next day or so. So if you would, please be on the lookout for that. And the reason that we probably will not be able to execute that training in June is because we're actually going to, we're asking you to meet twice in June, to have two meetings. So we have a June 12th meeting, which is our regular scheduled. Katie and I were reviewing the, what appeared to be the, what we believe is going to be the agenda for that night. And it is quite lengthy, something like 12 or 13 cases potentially. So you'll have a, a lengthy meeting that night. And then we're also proposing to have a joint work session with the city council, which will take place, and we'll also get this to you on email, so you can put it on your calendar, on June 26th at 6 o'clock. So this work session is particularly focused on the Civic Square PAD project, which is the partnership that the city is forging with Globe Corporation in order to develop, the city's interest of that is a city hall project, along with other civic amenities. And then the, the private sector portion of the project has office and residential and things of that nature as well. So it is a very important project that we certainly want to brief you and the council on, walk you through. The developer will be here, will be here, staff will be here, various city staff will be here to, to walk you through all the details associated with it. That same night, after the work session, that meeting would adjourn, and then we'll have a special planning commission meeting. There'll be a public hearing. We'll have a staff presentation like you normally do, and then ask you to consider and make a, a recommendation to the council. So that case can get to council before they take their break on July 8th. Does that make sense to everybody? So that's what we'll be asking you to do. You'll be getting an email with the particulars about it and so on and so forth in the very near future, but June 26th at 6 o'clock.
Can I just note that that date was on your calendars as a potential tentative meeting date? And so we are saying we need that meeting now.
Thank you. I think that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chris. And to other commission members, please do look at that, that training deal. Chris showed it to me earlier, and I think it, it's nice. I've been on here for probably way too long, but this is a great opportunity, and we want to make sure that whatever is, you know, both staff and our, all of our times are used efficiently, so don't hesitate to comment on that. Next meeting, the next Planning and Zoning Commission meeting will be held on June 12th, 2019, at 6:00 PM at the Goodyear Municipal Court and Council Chambers. With that, we are adjourned.